We'll go ahead and call the regular meeting of the Placerville Planning Commission Tuesday, November 7, 2023 to order. If you'd all please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and it's good to see everyone. Could we have the roll call, please? Commissioner Carter?
Present.
Chair Ferrin?
Here.
Vice Chair Kine?
Here.
Commissioner Lepper?
Back in business.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
We have a quorum. Closed session report, we have none. Item four, adoption of the agenda. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt.
Motion to adopt the agenda?
I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Agenda is adopted as presented. Consent calendar, nothing was pulled from consent. Oh, correction. Approval of the amendments of the Regular Planning Commission Meeting of October 17, 2023. We have a motion to adopt.
I need to pull it for just a quick correction.
Hmm?
I need a quick correction on the minutes, so.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Do you want to pull it now and do it under a pulled items?
No, no, consent calendar, that's where we're at.
Right.
We're gonna.
It's just Chair Ferrin was not here.
I was not here.
Staff was gonna make that correction.
Excellent, thank you. That was the only correction. Everything else is good.
And so, but who didn't call the meeting to order?
Commissioner, Vice Chair Kine.
Thank you. Okay, so that correction. Any other corrections to the minutes? Any members of the audience have any corrections to the minutes? Chair will attain a motion to adopt.
I will move to adopt with amended.
Second by Commissioner Smith, so the minutes are all in favor of approving the minutes as amended?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
I'll abstain from, due to absence.
Chair abstains as well. Thank you for reminding me that I have to abstain. Okay, then moving on to item six. Oh, items pulled from consent calendar, we've already addressed that. Item seven, items of interest to the public. This is an opportunity for members of the public to address the commission on matters that are, A, within our purview and B, are not on the agenda for this evening. Speakers will be limited to three minutes unless your comments are compelling. Anyone in the audience wish to address the commission this evening on items not on the agenda and within our purview? Seeing none, we'll dispense with item seven, move on to item eight. Written communications for non-agenda items to staff. Do we have any written communication?
No.
No, dispense with item eight. Presentations and educational workshops, there are none this evening?
I'm sorry, I was gonna address Commissioner Smith. That letter is associated with item 10.1, so that will be addressed there.
Gotcha. Then that moves us on to item 10.1. This is an environmental assessment. Site plan review SPR 82-05-R3, gas station reimaging Marathon to VP Racing Fuels, consideration of a site plan review application for a major change to the approved site plan within the commercial zone for, one, reimaging from Marathon to VP Racing Fuels, including modification of the exterior color scheme and existing signage, and, two, find the project categorically exempt from SEQA. Location is 99 Placerville Drive, Placerville, California. And I believe, Ms. Hunter, you have a staff report?
I do, thank you. So SPR 82-05-R3 is a request to reimage the subject property from Marathon to VP Racing Fuels. This reimaging is considered a major change from the prior approval, including signage pursuant to a master sign plan under SPR 82-05-R from Valero to Shell and the staff level approval of SPR 82-05-R2 from Shell to Marathon, and includes an increase in signage from approximately 280 square feet to roughly 310 square feet. Staff provided a history of prior approvals on pages two through four of the staff report. Further, a comparison table of the prior approved sign area to the proposed sign area is included on page 10 in Table 1 of the staff report. The application for SPR 82-05-R3 is a result of code enforcement. A brief description of the code compliance history is provided on page four of the staff report. Overall, reimaging of the subject parcel resulted in a moving target for the Development Services Department. However, following coordination between staff and the property owners, an application was submitted on August 18, 2023. The proposed reimaging includes the following modifications. The front roof of the food mart is proposed to be painted Sherwin-Williams tomato red with white trim at the top. The prior approval was for a solid cream color. New illuminated wall sign on the food mart, shown in Figure 3 of the staff report. The bollards lining the front of the food mart are proposed to be painted white. The pump islands would be retrofitted with the new VP Racing graphics as shown on Figure 4 in the staff report. And new signage is proposed on three of the four sides of the canopy. Two VP Racing Fuel signs on the north and south face of the canopy. One VP Racing sign on the east face of the canopy. One Mad Scientist logo sign on the south face of the canopy. And in addition, of three pump ID flags, canopy posts. And then the retrofit of the existing pole sign to replace the Marathon logo panel with VP Racing Fuels logo panel and add a VP Racing Fuels panel under that, and then replace the fuel price panel. It should be noted that the proposal includes signage on the outside of an accessory structure, also shown in Figure 3, and a temporary freestanding sign. Staff consider both to be prohibited signage and did not include them in the signage calculations. Regarding the temporary sign, it is the opinion of staff that the fuel pricing is adequately provided and visible on possible drive in both directions as presented by the pole sign. Further, staff received a letter from Kathy Lishman regarding the temporary sign stating that the sign impeded visibility of oncoming traffic. Copies of this letter were provided to commissioners prior to the meeting and can be found at the back counter. It is staff's opinion that the previous approvals for the subject parcel allowed for adequate advertisement and identification, and that the signage as proposed is considered excessive. The Mad Scientist logo, ID B on Sheet 5 of Attachment 3, is a new location proposed on the canopy from prior approvals. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission not approve the Mad Scientist logo, reducing the total aggregate square footage to approximately 298 square feet. Please note that based on the frontage of the building, which is 34 feet, and the canopy, which is 28 feet, the total aggregate square footage allowed under the general regulations of the zoning ordinance, Section 10-417, is 200, sorry, 124 square feet. Overall, this request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to SEQA guidelines, Section 15301, existing facilities, in that it involves the reimaging of an existing fueling station that will result in no expansion of the existing use. The project is consistent with the general plan, Community Design Section, Goal C, in that with staff's recommended modifications, the existing business will have adequate and professional quality signage. Further, the proposed project is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance, Section 10-4-9, Site Plan Review, and Section 10-4-17, Highway Commercial. As such, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of SPR 82-05-R3 request, and conditionally approve SPR 82-05-R3 located at 99 Placerville Drive as amended by staff based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on SPR 82-05-R3.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. That was a very good report. Questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Carter, Commissioner Kine, Commissioner Kine?
Thank you. I just want to make sure that I'm clear on one of the elements of the sign in Table 1 on page 10, on the right-hand column under the proposed signage. The, there's alphabetical A, B, C, and it's printed B as being the.
B as in boy, sorry.
Logo. And I'm not sure where that's actually going to be located. On page 7, the Mad Scientist logo on the canopy is shown on, has letter C, and it's on the, I guess that would be, as you're looking at it, the right-hand side of the south-facing canopy?
Yes, I apologize. It looks like it is.
Designation of C.
C.
But over in the summary table, it has a designation of B? Is that?
It could be a staff mistake. It should be C.
It should be C, okay. And then on, okay, so then I'm looking on Figure 8. Again, the lettering, this is the aerial view, there's A, B, and C. So I just want to make sure that what they're proposing is to put that Mad Scientist logo out on the Placerville Drive side.
Yes, that is correct.
Of the canopy.
I'm not sure how staff missed that. My mistake. Yes, it should be C.
It should be C, okay. And it is going to be over there, okay. So I just want to make sure I know where it's located and how it would be seen from the street. Thank you.
Other questions of staff by commissioners? Commissioner Carter?
I just want to clarify that the accessory structure, that's the propane.
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted, I wasn't 100% clear on that, so, thank you.
Any other questions of staff by commissioners? Okay, this time, this is, we'll open the public hearing. Invite the applicant or the representative to address the commission if they're so inclined. We have a representative? Good evening. State your name. Pull the microphone up to, there you go, sir. Thank you. Thank you for coming.
I'm Doug Gandeep. Thanks for being here. And we have all that we need in this paperwork, and we comply with whatever you say, you know?
Very good. Thank you so much. That's easy. Questions of the applicant, of the applicant by commissioners? Well, let's find Commissioner Smith.
Yeah, just because of the letter that we got from Kathy Lishman, the sandwich sign that you have out there, is that something you'd need? Because it seems like it's duplicative of the electronic.
We have it way behind on the street, but the reason we want to have that sign over there, because like that sign says the cash price and the credit price. So a lot of times when we just have the cash price on there and people try to use credit cards, and it's 10 cents extra, and they come and fight with us all the time inside, like, why are you charging us more? That's the only reason, just to have two different likes, prices on it, cash price and credit price.
Is it something you can put further back, closer to the other sign?
All the way to the back?
No, just to hold up and show you the illustration.
Mm-hmm.
This is where you have the large electronic sign.
Mm-hmm.
And then the sandwich sign.
Yeah, it's behind that one. Yeah, so we moved it a lot back. Yeah, we have already done that.
Okay.
Yeah.
Would it be an option to put the credit, you know how some of them have both listed on the major one?
It was always like that, you know, even before we took over, it was always like that.
Would it be an option for you to put that on the?
It would be a lot more work for us, because these are electronic, not electronic signs, manual signs, you know? So like, to change them on that is not that easy. So we have the smaller sign on the side, it's a lot more easier for us to change.
Understood. Thank you.
Any other questions of the applicant by commissioners?
Chair Ferrin, if I may?
Yes.
Just from staff's perspective. The temporary sign is explicitly prohibited by code. It's not an option under the master sign plan.
Ah, okay, so the applicant may or may not have realized that, so.
May or may not have realized it because it was with, it was left there from the previous applicant that.
Gotcha.
Never came to fruition.
Okay, so do you understand what Mr. Reva's just said? So you're gonna have to come up with some other, we understand the issue, but you're gonna have to come up with some other means of accomplishing the objective.
Do you have to apply for it again?
So?
For that sign? No?
The sandwich sign is not going to be allowed.
He's asking if they changed this, I think, to be the two prices?
Yeah, they can do that.
Does he have to apply again?
Oh, so, no, they don't have to, if they want to change what we're going to approve, the signing has been presented, they want to change that to show cash and credit, that's okay. That's still within the.
Yes, that would be okay, as long as within the parameters of what you're approving. If they wanted to install a permanent additional signage, we would have to come back before the Planning Commission.
But to alter this one, the proposed new signage on page 8, they could make it a credit cash sign if they wanted, and it wouldn't need to come back to us.
They could do whatever they like on that sign.
Okay, great.
Partially consistent with what you approve tonight.
Right. Does that make sense? Okay, thank you. Sorry for that. Commissioner Kine, you have your microphone, and Commissioner Smith, you still have your microphone on, but you don't have a question, I assume. All right, thank you. Commissioner Kine?
I wanted to know more about the Mad Scientist logo that you're proposing. There's just one copy of that. Everything else that you're proposing is the VP Racing.
It's their.
What's that Mad Scientist logo keyed to in your business?
It's their logo. It's their logo. It's not mean, it's their logo for the VP Racing.
Yeah.
Okay.
You know, like every.
Yeah.
So it just kind of stands alone?
Yeah, that's their logo.
Right.
Okay.
That's not something that I projected. It's just their logo, the company logo.
Okay. And is there an absolute requirement that you use it?
The company has to, has their sign, you know? Like Chevron has their, RCO have their signs, you know? So the same way VP has to have their sign.
It's a branding for VP Racing.
VP Racing requires that you use that Mad Scientist logo somewhere in your signage?
Yes, it's their logo. It's for their brand.
Just like the VP Racing text is part of their branding?
Yes.
That is too. Okay.
You don't like the Mad Scientist?
I think it's a little odd. It does, like I said, it's only, there's only one.
Right.
And I'm not really sure, you know, what's he doing? You know, because the rest of it is all about racing. That idea, you know, we got flags and checkers.
Yeah, Chair Ferrin and staff could make a comment.
Yeah, go ahead, Pierre.
They're required, okay, I just, now I appreciate what it is they.
VP Racing, this one is gonna be the first one in Northern California.
Oh, great. That's good. Pierre, go ahead.
Staff is just gonna comment that the VP Racing is their trademark.
Correct, yeah. It's their Chevron, as it were.
That's, that's correct. So it's not like a, any particular brand of fuel can have any number of logos.
Right.
So in other words, you're not compelled to approve that, is, I guess, the point I made.
Yeah, gotcha. Okay. Any other questions of the applicant? Commissioner Kine, your microphone is still on. All done. All right, well, thank you very much.
No problem. Thanks, ma'am.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on this project? All right, seeing none. I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. Comments? The chair will just note that the applicant is agreeable to all of the conditions that are put forth, including the signage change, and the chair finds that the application and the project is consistent, compatible, and should be approved.
I have a concern about the color of the roof fascia trim on the convenience store element. You take a, see a good look at the complete proposal on, that's the second page of their submittal of the signage. A couple, actually, I think it was like two meetings ago, or maybe three, we had this issue of a bright red color come before us, and the commission agreed that that was out of place, a little too bright in the context of everything else surrounding it on Placerville Drive. So this really, you know, it came to my attention right away. It is very bright and colorful, but I'm, I think it's a little too much contrast for the site, and I was wondering if the other commissioners agreed and if we could propose that that roof fascia, instead of being the, I think it's called tomato red, go with instead either white, one of their elements, or the blue that is on the gas canopy surround, so that they're the same color. You know, there's a picture in this package that shows that winner's circle projected on the existing beige, and I don't think it really does it justice. I think it would look better if it had, thank you, what page is that?
It's towards the back.
Towards the back of their submittal of the sign package. And so you can see how, it just doesn't, yeah, it doesn't really pop out. I think the, probably the owner wants, you know, the public to be able to see that, and tie the two, you know, the canopy and the structure. So my thought was to change the project description to have that roof fascia be the same color as the gas canopy, as opposed to the contrast of red, or alternatively, go with white. And also, then, the Mad Scientist logo, I agree with staff that that's, I would like to reduce the total amount of signage. I think it's a little bit, a little bit more than what we have currently on the, or what was there on the old Chevron. So reducing that total aggregate signage, if, taking away the Mad Scientist logo would bring it down to just under 300 total square feet. Those are my thoughts about the project.
But taking away, the Mad Scientist is kind of an inherent element for the racing fuels. I mean, I would have, I'd have a lot of difficulty with approving that request. That's inherent. That's, that's a pretty specific element, I think. And then just.
Again, well, that's why I asked our applicant about that. I don't really see it being tied in. Everything else is about racing, flags, red, white, and blue, and as far as minimizing the total square footage, you know, staff had recommended that that one be deleted. And I can't really, I'm not sure what other element might be deleted from the project to bring the total square footage down.
Well, if staff may, I mean, the, the goal of removing the Mad Scientist was because it was an additional new location. So B, whether it be Mad Scientist, that staff mistakenly put Mad Scientist, it should be the VP Racing, I think, Fuels, that logo towards the back. That could be removed instead.
That was gonna be my question, is.
Is this a new location?
Yeah, I agree. It looks a little crowded, but I do understand if that, even if it might not make sense to us, if that's the logo that they really like, the company, I would be more inclined to maybe reduce one of the VP Racing signs on the canopy, because I think there's, it's clear that this is VP Racing to me. So, I mean, we're taking away that temporary sign, but it's on the top of the gas pumps. It's up here, it's on there, and on the store. So I, if the Mad Scientist is important to the company, which I do understand in branding, I'd be inclined to reduce the VP Racing on the canopy. And I agree with you. That was my concern as well, as I immediately thought of the tire shop as well, and just that it was very similar, very striking colors. And I do think that your suggestion of reducing the red and bringing the blue in there is a nice compromise to sticking with what I'm assuming is their national branding, but kind of toning it down a little bit and falling in line with our previous decision.
And I did drive around and look at some other stations, gas stations in our community, and I actually saw that repeated, that the color on the canopy appeared on the associated food mart, convenience store, what have you. So I think that that's, you know, in keeping, and it adds a lot, I think, makes it more harmonious, if you will. So as far as, so where would the Mad Scientist then end up? I'm looking on their canopy elevations diagram, and it's labeled C. So where, which VP Racing Fuels logo do you think could be exchanged for the Mad Scientist?
Well, B doesn't do much to advertise to the street. It's just towards the food mart. So that one possibly could come off, and then keep A and D for more visibility, and the C is still out there showing their brand to the street, but reduces one of the four signage to two, or to three, two VP Racings. So A, D, and C, essentially, I guess, is what I would see.
D and C. And the location of C would?
If I'm, are these the, these are the correct locations? These ones are?
Yes, those are.
Perfect. No, no, no problem. I just want to make sure that I'm interpreting it correctly.
So it would still remain on the south-facing canopy on the Placerville Drive side of the south-facing canopy?
Um, yes.
As it, but the VP Fuels over on the, on the other side is the one you think?
I think we could take B off.
Take that one off.
Leave C. That would loosen up the signage on that side. I don't think B does a lot for them in terms of advertising, and then they would have their end one on the short side, and then another one on the A side. Oh, I see, yeah. I was looking at a different picture. I see what you're saying, the south, yeah. I would remove B from the south-facing canopy and recommend moving, putting the color of the.
So that reduces the total aggregate signage down just slightly, but still we're below 300 square feet total. I think that's, yeah, that meets our goal, and I agree with that.
And then also agree to recommend the building canopy to be blue.
To be blue.
Intensive blue. I think, I think the blue would look nice.
I do, too.
The only, just if I can just pop in here, the only thing on the blue is that you have the winner's circle. Go ahead and come back up, because I, we may want to, no, no, please, go ahead and come back up, because we're gonna kind of negotiate, I think, a little bit here. My only concern with having the blue is that you have the blue winner's circle on blue, and I.
That's what my, I was gonna say, like.
Yeah, 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 all right. So that, but don't leave us. I don't think that, I don't think that works, right? And I'm assuming that the VP winner's circle logo as it is, that's what it is. So if you want, I'm personally, I don't have an issue with the red, frankly. Doesn't bother me. But it's also not a hill to die on. So we could come up with, we could come up with an alternative neutral color. The question for you is, if we went with an alternative, more neutral beige color instead of the red, still retaining the winner's circle the way it is, does that work? Can you live with that?
Or the gray or white?
Well, that's kind of one.
Gray is another element.
Gray and white, anything.
Gray or white, it's okay?
Because they get too dirty, you know, all the time, and it's.
Okay, very, okay, great. See, that's easy.
And the winner's circle is because like, it's their program.
Yeah.
With the winner's circle, you get discounts, you know, so they have to advertise that.
Yeah, yeah. So I figured that, that needed to remain as it is. That, that's a brand right there, boom. Just like, it's kind of like the Mad Scientist brand thing.
Right.
So he's willing to go with a gray or a white.
So that's also one of the colors associated with the brand?
Yeah.
So let's leave.
Red, white, and blue are essentially the colors of the brand, and they're willing to, he's willing to accept either, you know, a white or a gray, so, which I think is great, so.
We can maybe leave it up to, unless you wanted to decide on a color.
So what we're gonna.
Give them the option of white or gray.
We'll, we'll leave you to decide if you want a white or a gray. You'll just need to let the staff know what you're ultimately gonna go with. So I think that's the direction we're going, right? Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
If you're looking at the food mart, and you're talking about changing it from red to something else like white, it's already blue. If you had some red around the blue, not much, but some, it would stand out, and, and, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And the building is too behind. You know, it's not on the street. It's way behind, so it's not gonna be like catching in, too bright for the drivers, you know? It's not right at the front. It's a little too behind, so it's not gonna be too bright for the drivers.
Right. Yes, correct. Yeah, exactly.
Chair Ferrin, if staff could make just a quick comment. Staff reviewed all of the C stores and canopies in the city.
Yeah.
Typically, what we found, they all, all the canopy fascia matched the C store.
Yeah.
This would be an exception where they're adding an entirely different color scheme to the C store versus that on the canopy.
Okay. But, but that doesn't, doesn't give you any heartburn. It's okay, right? Doesn't cause a problem?
Well.
As long as we.
We just heard a commissioner stating that maybe there was, it was too much.
Right, sure, and I think we're trying to resolve.
And so you do have the ability to mute it somewhat as being proposed. I just wanted to let you know that staff did view the other.
Great.
Filling stations.
Great. Thanks, Pierre. Appreciate that. Okay, so I think we've got something we can work with. Someone want to float a motion? Any other issues? Go ahead. Thank you.
Oh, I just want to bring to your attention, I had spoken with staff about conditions of approval. When I drove by the site recently, I noticed that they do have landscaping in front. And it's not called out in the staff report, but we've considered this before in other proposals. And staff assured me that on file is a landscaping plan and a landscape maintenance agreement. So those are already existing. However, I'd like to just emphasize that we don't, in this case, have the prior conditions of approval. But I would like the commission to consider adding a line, maybe under number seven, add the phrase that all conditions of approval from prior approvals remain in force. And that just brings in everything. I was concerned about the landscape maintenance agreement because we've discussed that often.
Correct. And do you want to say... And just for emphasis, say, including the landscape agreement?
No, just all of them. I don't know what all they are, but I just want to emphasize in the conditions of approval that all the existing ones... And I also just saw my other note under number three. I had been... Because this temporary sign is still there, and then also we have received the memo from Kathy Lishman discussing that temporary sign, I just wanted, again, to emphasize it. It's on the books, but number three talks about the prohibited temporary signage shall be removed from the site. And then it goes on to paraphrase our zoning ordinance language. Prohibited signage includes flashing signs, moving rotating, then A board, sandwich board signs. And right there, I would just like to pull in from our ordinance, other freestanding signs. So that we're emphasizing that this is important to us. And, you know, of course, it exists. They know that it has to be removed. But I want to set a precedent so that future applicants know that this is important to the city, that, you know, all of these things are prohibited. Is that too much?
Could I just add the word freestanding after the word? It says sandwich board signs, semicolon, signs, or other advertising devices. Because I... Could I just say freestanding signs right there? Would that meet your...
In the ordinance, the wording freestanding signs comes right after sandwich board signs, but it could go...
Somehow it got dropped.
In there.
Okay.
But I just, you know, this really surprised me, shocked me to get this memo from Ms. Lishman that this... I had been looking at it more as kind of making the site more cohesive and less chaotic to remove that temporary sign. But now this has been brought to our attention, this actually is a bit of a safety concern. So good reasons for them to be prohibited.
Okay.
Did I understand, if I would...
Uh, microphone? Yeah, good. Thank you.
Did I understand already that the applicant said it was going to be removed? And did I understood you to say that that was going to be done? Because that is the requirement.
Yes. It... You know, from staff's perspective, I don't think it's necessary that you have specific conditions of approval about removing that sign. Just so the commission is aware, staff is vigorously looking at fuel stations throughout the city because they're notoriously putting up all kinds of temporary signs and were trying to clean that up. So in addition, we would go after this sign if it doesn't get removed anyway. We just sort of called it out because it was in the submittal package from the applicant. And we will... And I guess from the perspective of the applicant, I don't want to speak too much for the applicant, but we had the impression that they felt they could include that as a sign to be approved under this package, and it can't be.
Right. Okay. Pierre, kind of following up on Commissioner Kinney's concerns with yards to the landscape and the fact that there are other conditions of approval from prior applications. Is the applicant aware of all those?
Well, the applicant should be when they purchase the site. Staff apologizes that we typically would have brought forward any other applicable conditions of approval with that site plan review. Since this is a modification to that pre-existing site plan review, we should have brought those forward, including landscaping.
Well, my main concern, I'm sure that you'll resolve it, is to make sure the applicant has that information so they know.
Yes.
Yeah. Okay, great. So you'll work with the applicant on that?
We'll work with the applicant on those.
Okay.
They're all still valid and...
Correct. Right. Okay. It sounds like we should be pretty close to a motion, Commissioner Lepper.
I'll give it a whirl.
Very good.
All right.
I just have one more concern.
Ms. Kinney.
All right, you're doing the motion now. No, I'm just kidding.
About this temporary sign. When I just... I noticed it this... When we were talking about this picture, around that temporary sign are some bollards. And it looks like it's maybe attached to those bollards. Or I see the sandbags. I hadn't noticed those. And so if they take away the temporary sign, this...
Yeah, if staff could...
What did Ms. Lishman say? It obstructed her vision. Should they take away those protective bollards also?
The bollards should be painted white so that they're a little bit more visible. The bollards are to protect the backflow preventer device that's there behind it.
Oh, that's why they're there.
That's why they're there. They just conveniently use those bollards as a means of tying that freestanding sign.
Okay. And so the bollards, I believe that's in the staff report somewhere now that I think about it.
To clarify, I asked the applicant's representative if all bollards would be painted white. Currently, only the ones directly in front of the store are proposed to be painted white. So if you would like that to be a condition, you would need to add that.
That would be good.
Okay, so all bollards on the property should be painted white. Okay. I got... I just remembered that there was that language about them, so we'll... We need to add that as well.
Okay.
Thank you.
Good catch. Okay. I think I have this. All right. So we're getting... I'm going to make a motion to adopt the staff record as part of the public... The staff report as part of the public record. Make the following findings in support of SPR 82-05-R3 request, that the request is categorically exempt from environmental review, consistent with the Placerville general plan, consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of the zoning ordinance, site plan review, and highway commercial zone, and that the approval is based on the analysis provided in the staff's November 7th report to the planning commission. And three, to conditionally approve SPR 82-05-R3 located at 99 Placerville Drive based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the conditions of approval in attachment one. The conditions of approval will be amended to include that the VP Racing logo indicated on spot B in the application's submittal package will be removed, that the applicant will select a color for the market that is more in the gray or white tone in their color palette, that all prior conditions of approval for this site remain in effect, including landscaping agreements, and that the bollards on site will all be painted white across the property.
We have a motion...
Good catch. And that we will add the word freestanding to item to condition number three, following the phrase A board, sandwich board signs, semicolon, freestanding signs, or other advertising devices.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion, a second. Discussion on the motion?
None. Just to clarify, though, that the applicant knows that if you want to change your sign to include... Okay. Good. Thanks.
Any other discussion on the motion? Call the question?
Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Kinney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepper?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Okay. Your application has been approved with the conditions specified. Just so you know, there is a 10-day appeal process if, for some reason, somebody in the community wishes to appeal it. Otherwise, please work with staff for the final details. And thank you for being so agreeable. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. All right. Then that will then bring us to item 10.2. This is a site plan review, historic district review. This is consideration of a, let's see, single-family residential historic zone structure to modify an existing single-family residence to one, construct a 279-square-foot addition, remove existing shake, board, and batten, and T111, replace with fiber cement shake and wood board and batten. Three, remove existing aluminum windows, replace with vinyl windows. And I think this is a four, replace the front door. And five, modify existing color scheme. And six, find the project is categorically exempt from CEQA. And Ms. Hunter, you have the staff report.
Do, thank you. So SPR 23-12 is a request to modify an existing single-family residence located within the Spring Street, Coloma Street Historic District. There are two single-family dwellings located on the subject parcel, address 2925 Wood Street, which is the focus of SPR 23-12, and 2968 Coloma Street, previously approved by the planning commission on October 17th, case number SPR 23-11. Neither dwelling is included in the city's historic resources inventory or the state or national register of historic places. The subject dwelling, 2925 Wood Street, was constructed in 1926 and was one of two cottages. The second was demolished in the late 1990s under building permit 1187. The building was approximately... is approximately 650 square feet with a mix of vertical T111, board and batten and shake siding, and aluminum windows. Proposed modifications include the following: construction of a 279-square-foot addition for a bedroom and formal dining area, removal and replacement of existing siding with wood, board, and batten, and fiber cement shake, removal and replacement of existing aluminum windows with vinyl windows, removal and replacement of the existing roof with compatible roofing, replacement of the front door, and a change of the color scheme of the dwelling, which is provided in figure six of the staff report. The dwelling has been modified since its construction in 1926, now a composition of mixed-match siding and aluminum windows. It is the opinion of staff that the construction of the rear addition will not detract from the essential form and integrity of the property. No conjectural elements are proposed. Further, the proposed exterior modifications to the siding and color scheme as proposed would result in a more cohesive architectural style similar to adjacent buildings. Overall, the project would enhance and increase the visual quality of the neighborhood through the restoration of an existing deteriorated building. The request is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15301, existing facilities, and 15331, historical resource restoration rehabilitation, in that the project involves construction of a 279-square-foot addition and modifications to the exterior with compatible substitute materials that will result in no expansion of the existing residential use to a structure not listed on local, state, or federal historic resource inventories. The project is consistent with the general plan, community design, and housing element in that the alterations are compatible with the visual attributes of neighboring structures within the historic district, and include the restoration and reuse of an older structure. Further, the proposed project is consistent with the purpose, intent, and criteria of zoning ordinance sections 10-4-9, site plan review, 10-4-10, historic buildings in the city, and the City of Placerville Development Guide. As such, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the findings in support of the SPR 23-12 request, and conditionally approve SPR 23-12 located at 2925 Wood Street based on the project information and findings included in the staff report, and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in attachment one of the staff report. This concludes staff's report on SPR 23-12.
Thank you, Ms. Hunter. Questions of staff by commissioners?
I have one.
Commissioner Lepper?
Thank you. More so just some clarification. In the staff report, it talks about options for siding and windows. On page four, it talks about two options for the shake siding. And then on page nine, staff recommends the second option, but it states that the applicant wants option one. Staff recommends option two on page nine, but then in the conditions of approval, we're at option one. I was just wondering what the thought process is behind you guys mentioning that you preferred option two. But option one is kind of what I see as being the final selection. So I was just wondering what the thought process behind the statement on page nine saying option two, the cedar shake, is staff's recommendation?
So this is a consistency...
It's just... Yeah, it's option... It says the applicant wants option one, the Alora. And then it says staff recommends option two on page nine, but then in the conditions, it says we're going with Alora.
Right.
Which I don't care. I don't really have a...
Right, right.
I don't care. I just wanted to know why the sentence of staff recommending two.
We'd like to know which one, staff... Yeah.
Yeah, I believe that it's another staff error. I believe it should be option one, the fiber cement.
You guys are so busy. You do amazing jobs, so just thank you for clarification.
No, it's a mistake. It's supposed to be fiber cement.
So there's no... Okay, great. So that was my one question. And then the only other question I had was kind of similar. On page nine there, it also says the opinion of staff is that option one vinyl is a compatible material for the windows. Fine. But I don't see that clarif... Oh, no, you're right. It's right here, actually. I missed that. In number one, item six, it says Alpine vinyl windows. So that's the final selection, right?
Yep.
Okay, good. Those were my only two questions. Thank you.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes. My question is about the vinyl windows. Clearly, what you're replacing aluminum was not 1926. It's something of the 1950s. So you want overall to go back to the period of 1926, roughly the '30s. And that's what's used for the illustrations. I'll just hold them up so everybody can recognize what I'm looking at. And those have vinyl windows that are sectioned off. Like this one, that otherwise looks a lot like what their plans are, has windows that are divided into four sections. They're vinyl, and they can be up and down, but the difference is they have a vinyl divider. So it would have the 1930s look. No difference in cost. No difference in insulation value. So that's the question is, why not do that?
So that would probably be a question more appropriately directed to the applicant.
But just ask if you looked at that issue, that's all.
No, staff did not.
I want to make sure that what the application is for a simple double-hung window without the divided light. And Commissioner Smith, so what you're thinking about is a divided light window rather than just a double-hung?
Just like the examples that they've submitted.
But in their... But in their application, they're describing a simple double-hung window. Okay.
Is there another question? I have a question. On page 10, item six, with the Secretary of Interior, we state there what the standard is, which begins with deteriorated historic features will be repaired rather than replaced, et cetera, et cetera, right? But then the response doesn't really speak to the deterioration or whatever. Do you follow what I'm saying? What the staff response is in number six is what the applicant is going to do, but there's no reference as to why the features will be repaired rather than replaced. And the only reason I'm bringing this up is just for findings and consistency. And so I don't know if you have anything to add, that we could add in this, to this as... That speaks to what the Secretary of the Interior said. They have a standard, right? So can we speak to this standard? Can we speak to, we're going to do replace existing, and it's in such a deteriorated condition or something that it can't be repaired rather than replaced? You follow it? Just because we're supposed to respond, we're supposed to have an answer for the, the standard and, and our response in this particular case simply reiterates what the applicant's gonna do. It doesn't necessarily speak to the standard is all I'm, all I'm saying. How, let me rephrase my question. How can we speak to the standard?
Guess staff's response is that the structure has been heavily modified since its construction, so no historic materials still remain.
Good enough. I feel that we have, we have met our obligation to speak to the standard. That's, and that's all I was going for. Any other questions of staff by commissioners? Seeing, seeing none, I'll go ahead and open up the public hearing and invite the applicant or their agent to answer any questions, and there may be a couple. Thank you for attending.
Yes, our pleasure. Thank you. Alan Ming, this is Chris Cowsbeak.
How are you?
Partner's on this deal. Good to see a couple of you again.
Great.
And again, I want to thank staff for putting together a great report. I think next time I'll do better on my submittal. I've learned a lot. Thank you. To address a couple of the issues that came up on the shake siding, I think I may have complicated that a little bit as well. Originally, we came forward with a vinyl shake, which they quickly said that probably would not work. So we came back with the composite, the Alura was kind of a second option, got moved up to the first option. And so I think that caused a little confusion there as well. On the, the windows, the colonial grids were something originally I was going to push for. My wife is the designer, and Chris brought up, being it's a smaller house, it might restrict the light a little bit, and that the windows that were currently there didn't have the colonial grids. But quite frankly, the cost is minimal, and we're willing to go either way without, with or without the grids will work fine.
Two agreeable applicants, back-to-back in one night.
You like that?
A lot, actually.
So we're excited about this project, as Kristen mentioned. You know, it's part of a bigger project with Coloma, and then hopefully at some point we'll be bringing forward the lot split application so we can add housing to, to the city of Placerville moving forward. But yeah, it was pretty straightforward and well-written. Chris, I don't think you have anything you want to add? No, I think you covered it.
Terrific. Any questions of the applicant by commissioners? Commissioner Keeney.
Thank you again for coming out to answer our questions. It's always good to talk directly to the applicants. It's really good to see you here. My question, I, I got a little confused. I was looking at the, the plan set, and on, let's see. Bear with me as I flip through it. First, let's talk about the siding. On the third page of the plan set, it's showing up by the front elevation, there's a note, and it says, "Typical vertical board and batten siding, hardy panel, hardy panel select cedar mill." And so when I saw that, it sounded to me as if you had considered or at one point were planning on using the cement fiber board as the siding, not just for the shake detail up by the gable. And I know that the, I just want to make sure that what we approve is in agreement with the plan set that's going to be, you know, put out to bid.
Yes, the, the draftsman thought that the fiber cement was required. He didn't know that wood was an acceptable option.
Okay.
Could I ask you to pull the microphone a little bit, just for the audience?
Yeah, the, the draftsman, the designer that drew up the plans, was under the impression that the hardy board was a requirement. I'm not, again, I'm not sure what standards he was working with.
Well, it's, yeah, non-combustible, and someone who's been dealing with, you know, wildfire resiliency probably thought that that's, and it would be a good choice in that regard. There's a lot you can do for home hardening outside of using something like a non-combustible, but in this case, because you are in the historic district, we do prefer that you replace in kind whenever possible. Which brings me to then your preference for the cement fiber board up in the gable for the detail. Why use the cement fiber board there as opposed to just getting more cedar shake material?
The two main reasons for trying to go with the composite shake siding, one is the cost. The composite kind of hardy board shake siding runs about six bucks a square foot. The actual cedar shake runs about 13 to $14 a square foot, and the lead time is a little bit longer. We were, sounds a little counter to the siding part of it, but shake has much more surface area to catch embers and things like that.
Definitely.
From a buyer's perspective, it poses a little bit more of an issue than just the board and batten siding would.
Right, and that, you know, people talk about, well, painting is one way to reduce catching embers if you have the smooth surface, you know, on, on wood. The cedar shake, I appreciate, and thank you for considering that, you know, our town is high hazard for wildfire, and these things are, you know, always the top of mind for most of us, but you're, you're in this, in a different situation, being in our, one of our historic districts. So thank you for explaining that to me.
Along those lines, we are doing the, I call them the Vulcan vents. I think there's names for them.
Yes.
But I just got the letter, I'm in Shingle Springs, so I'm on the fair plan, and I just got the letter about being able to reduce your insurance if you meet certain criteria. We're trying to keep that in mind as we move forward on these projects, that not only just the safety perspective, but from a buyer's perspective, that the house is going to meet those standards as well.
Thank you. My last question for you is regards to the roofing. Again, on the roofing plan, you're, in, in your submittal, you're specifying, I think it's timber, timberline product?
Yeah.
And then on page one of the plan set, if you will, under the notes, last line, it says that, help me with the small print here, "The project shall comply with 2022 California Energy Efficiency Standards." The roofing, did, did you consider or did your roofing contractor propose a cool roofing product? It's, that's part of the 2022 standards, and I just want to make sure that what gets installed is the look that you've presented to the planning commission. So did the cool roofing issue come up? Have you thought about that as far as part of, part of your plan?
Yeah, we went with two different contractors to get bids to local roofing companies, and so we went with what we wanted to do in terms of look and feel and aesthetic for the area, but also their recommendations to meet all the, you know, most recent, you know, fire standards, the O'Hagan vents, I think you were talking about the Vulcan vents. And so really just going on their recommendation of what, you know, they do in the area and to meet the, the current standards.
So they didn't, they didn't propose to you a, so the difference would be the shingle has a coating to give it a slightly better reflectivity for energy efficiency. So as far as your proposal, you're just going to go with the, I think it's, well, this is charcoal color, timberline is the, the name of the shingle you're going to use?
Yeah, that refers to the style and the brand.
Oh, the GAF, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, timberline, okay.
I thought all the GAF products were...
Met the code?
Yeah.
That, that would be preferable, and, and that may be something that just, you know, kind of fell off, but it's, it's assumed that you'll be using the cool roof option. It seems like it's, it's manufacturers...
They already cost what they are today. Again, that becomes the selling point as well.
A good point.
To use the energy, the more energy.
If staff might...
GAF has a, I don't know if the timber, we'd have to go back, but I know...
Timberline is cool roof.
It is a cool roof. Okay, thank you.
I thought so, but I, my little flyer didn't say.
Sorry, I was trying to pull, I was trying to pull up the bid to get the exact verbiage for you, but it sounds like she beat me to it.
Okay.
And if staff might, I have a sample of the fiber cement that they have graciously provided, so it has the color and you can actually feel the texture of it.
Okay, thank you. And thank you for your patience, as I just make sure that what's on this side of, you know, what we agreed to here is what you're going to build. So this is the...
This is the, the shake.
The shake, and the, the color of the shake. Okay. Great, that's the cement.
What, we get samples?
Thank you. I, I don't have any other questions right now. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other commissioners have questions of the applicant?
I, I do as well. I'm just going to hold up a couple illustrations that you can recognize from there, and that's the current condition of a couple windows. It looks pretty shabby. It looks like the shakes and the siding, the board and batting is in pretty bad shape, but that's only looking at photographs. What can you tell us about the condition of the wood? What kind of dry rot, if any, is present? What kind of deterioration is there of the wood?
Yeah, there's nothing really usable there. We've looked at multiple areas, and there's so much dry rot and the condition, and nothing's repairable there, so really looking at, you know, needing to tear all that off and replace it.
Thank you. Oh, and lastly, the reason these illustrations impressed me is because overall, you've done much to enhance the appearance as it was, the style of the 30s. But the windows that you're proposing, if it's half, two sections, wouldn't be that, whereas these, in both cases, are sectioned off windows, they're both to paint. But I'm impressed that you've used modern materials that have weather resistance and efficiency and all those other kind of factors put in while still looking with that historic look. It's appreciated.
Yeah, thank you. Just to clarify further, on the material that's there, that's just speaking to the existing that would be more period correct. A lot of the materials, as Kristen was speaking to, they're not even current. I mean, it's T-111, it's hodgepodge of different materials people have done over the years. So we're just trying to go for something that's going to be aesthetically pleasing, period correct, and consistent throughout.
Yeah, that's what I got from the report. Great. Any other questions to the applicant?
I just wanted, yeah, I just wanted to let you know, I did do a site visit, by the way, just to disclose that. Obviously, the current structure is pretty dilapidated, and I could see how there's very little savable, and even if it was, it's not the original material anyway. So I just wanted to express my appreciation to you guys for, you know, working within the, you know, trying to maintain the, the look using modern materials. I think you did a really good job of that. I think the color scheme is very nice. It's going to be a, a nice addition to that area, because that really is a nasty dilapidated building as it currently stands. So I just wanted to express my gratitude, as you did in your last project, for trying to maintain those standards and using, you know, modern materials. I think you guys had a great job, so thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lepper?
I just echo that, because I really do think that this is the way that we're going to maintain our historic districts, by getting the houses back in business without it being limiting to, to the community members. So I really, I appreciate it as well, and it's been, this is a really nice package, I think, for how we can move forward in our historic district, maintain the character while, by really strengthening the homes there, so thank you.
Commissioner Smith, did you have any additional comments or?
Just, as long as it's on, just to echo what's already been said. It's impressive, and it's reflective of the standards that we can comply with.
Great. Commissioner Keeney, any other questions?
I concur with all of you, and also, we haven't even talked about the addition. You're making an incredibly small structure, still very modest, if you will, but, you know, again, keeping with the design, it's, having the uniform appearance, all of that is actually is going to be from the, the street view, and I do want to mention that I did do a, a site visit. From the street view, it's not going to change very much at all. Maybe from the side view, that's where you'll, you'll see the, the change, the expansion. But, you know, just a fantastic job on the, the design of the addition, I think, making it, preserving and improving some housing stock with this project. Thank you.
Yeah, it's been a fun project so far, and I think you spoke to it earlier, just with the concern with fire, and you'll see it as, you know, we apply for the lot split, but one of the conditions of that was creating a fire lane so that the fire engines have a place to turn around, and so we are giving up some, some property for that, but we see the benefit to the city and, you know, everyone that's involved. So that, that's the other part of this that I think is a benefit, too.
Yeah.
Great, appreciate that.
And when we're all done, we hope you all come for a tour.
Great.
Well, this is a, this is a public hearing.
Oh, yeah, no, sorry.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else in the audience that wishes to address the commission on this project? All right, well, seeing none, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing, bring it back to the commission for discussion and possible action. I concur with all of the comments that were offered on this, and it's refreshing to see something like this brought to us. So Commissioner Lepper?
I didn't want to keel over when I saw vinyl windows in the, in the historic district this time. It's a new feeling. Okay, I, I'd like to make a motion unless anyone else...
Before you do that, these were the comments I wanted to make. First of all, I think it's important to point out that this is not an instance where you can repair and maintain. So that's the first finding that has to be made regarding the historic standards. Once you do that, and, and then you come up with new materials, it's the standard like for like, and they've met that standard and done it in a way in which it's consistent with modern code standards and modern public policy considerations, like fire resistance and things that kind. I have very strong views about the windows. It's fine to have vinyl for all the reasons we've already described, we're talking about double-pane windows, but the colonial style, the four sections, would be consistent with the period of the 1920s or 30s, and we've done that in all the other areas. We have simulated shake, we have board and batting that's simulated, albeit done in ways that are very modern and efficient, and it seems like the same shake should be done for the windows, because there's no material change in, in cost. And as you can see from the illustration, it's not going to obstruct much light flowing through. So that's my concern.
I defer to your expertise on, on these matters, but I will note that the applicant indicated they were not objectionable to the requirement, so we can take that into consideration. You might, you're more than likely correct, Commissioner Smith, on the period accuracy with that. So that may be something to consider.
What would be the actual term for that colonial style, or?
Actually, I'm, no, an architectural historian, I'm relying on the representations of the applicant who used that term, but we've all described it by the illustration that's used.
Yeah.
Grids?
Colonial grid.
Colonial grid, the applicant, for the record, colonial grid, I believe, is the, the term.
The daily double, ding, ding, ding.
There, there's different styles of grids, and I think colonial grid is what they're looking for.
Colonial grid seems to meet, I think, the intent of what Commissioner...
Could we just use the more general term divided light as opposed to colonial grid? Divided light is, yeah, has a grid to it.
That works, too, if, if that gets us to the same end, and it's more generic.
More generic and, you know, colonial grid, but divided light style?
I will defer to the applicant's description, but whatever English works.
I think he's agreeing, yeah. The applicant, we have a thumbs up from the applicant for those who can't see the audience. Okay. Commissioner Lepper?
I'm in.
I think she's ready.
Commissioner Carter, a break from the motions here.
Two for two tonight, okay.
Yes, yes, all right. So I would like to make a motion that we adopt the staff report as part of the public record, make the following findings as listed on page, in support of SPR 23-12, as listed on page 14 of the staff report, and three, conditionally approve Site Plan Review 23-12 located at 2968 Coloma Street based on the project information and findings included in the staff report and subject to the recommended conditions of approval included in Attachment 1 of the staff report dated October 17th. And the conditions of approval as listed in the staff report with the addition that the applicant will add a grid or divided light feature to the windows.
Would that be, for clarification, would that be condition 10?
Condition 10, yes.
Okay, so I have a motion. Do I have a second?
I just have one.
Can I get a second?
I'm glad to second it, I want to make a suggestion.
You're going to second the motion?
I, I will, but also...
I need to have a second to have discussion.
A second, but I want to ask for a second.
And then a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Okay, great, so we have a motion.
I think it's very important to make findings about the current condition as such that you cannot repair and replace what, or repair and maintain what you have.
I think that's good. I, I did read in Roman numeral two, number one, on page 14, that it was consistent with the Secretary... it was consistent with the Secretary of Interiors, but I think what you're asking for is to be even more specific, that the condition of the building is such that it cannot be repaired, it needs to be replaced, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
All right, so perhaps you can make, just in additional language, Commissioner Lepre, that'll be in her, number one, that's a, you'll accept that as a friendly amendment?
Absolutely, that...
Staff could, there's actually an error on Condition 3 on page 14, it should be 2925 Wood Street, apologies, instead of 2968.
Oh, sorry, okay, yeah, cool. On the very bottom, Condition 3, 2925 Coloma.
Condition...
Oh, I'm sorry, 2925 Wood.
Oh, Wood Street.
Okay, all right, so I'm going to amend my motion to update the staff report to reflect in condition, in the recommended actions, number 3, that the address be updated to 2925 Wood to reflect the accurate address, also to add to number 1, under Roman numeral 2, that the current condition of the building is beyond repair and being replaced with similar apparent, appearing materials.
Yes, it's just that the term used in the Secretary of Interior standards is repair and maintain, it's past that stage.
Right, very good.
If it wasn't, you'd have to go back and make it exactly like it was before.
Okay.
Very good.
Do you accept my two amendments? Okay, great, so...
So, a motion duly made and duly amended, additional discussion on the motion?
I was wondering about the roofing material, we've, in, conditional approval, number 2, the siding and the shake have been specified, but there's no mention of the roofing material, is that incorporated by reference because that's in the staff report?
So, for roofs in historic districts, if they're already, you know, modern or composition, we typically would approve them with just a building permit, so we, I didn't feel that it was necessary in the conditions, but it can be added.
As long as it's incorporated because it's part of the, the staff report, I'm fine with that. Okay, thanks for that clarification.
Any other questions or discussion? Call the question, please. Commissioner Carter?
Aye.
Chair Fran?
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney?
Aye.
Commissioner Lepre?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Great, so your project has been approved as conditioned, it is subject, of course, to a 10-day appeal process should somebody in the community feel the need to do so. Good luck with it, and thank you for what you presented and how it was presented.
Thank you.
And for attending. Moving on then to item 11, we have no continued items, we have no new business items, item 12 brings us to my favorite part of the meeting, item 13 matters from commissioners and staff. We'll start with item 13.1, staff reports.
Staff has no reports this evening.
And I believe we are not going to have a, a meeting on whatever our date would be...
Yes, the next meeting would be November 21st, but, but in observance of Thanksgiving, we're not going to have that, so the next meeting would be December 5th.
And we're anticipating a meeting on December 5th?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, then 13.2, Planning Commission matters, we'll start with 13.2.1 of the special committee report, do we have any updates from the special committee? The historic review, I know you and Kirk are working on, on some stuff, and wanted you to have plenty of time to present that, so what do you, what do you, where are we at?
Yeah, we're still developing the list of priorities as requested by the chair, we anticipated you not being here tonight.
Great.
And so, no, and that's fine, we were planning, it's mentioned in the minutes of our, of our last meeting also, where we're planning on having this list available to you guys on the next meeting, which would be December 5th, so we'll be presenting a recommended list of priorities based on the recommendations that you guys gave us, and additionally, the responsibilities that, you know, are given to us by the founding ordinance of the historic review committee, so we'll be presenting that to you guys at the December 5th meeting, and that's all we have for tonight unless Commissioner Smith has more to add.
It's the same thing, we deferred to your suggestion that... We wait when you're back, which is appropriate.
I appreciate that, I, I really do, thank you.
Thank you.
Also, I, I look, very much look forward to this product, and I think it's going to be good to bring forth the original ordinance and all of that, I think it's just going to be really helpful to get us on the right foot, so thank you again for your efforts, and I look forward to it. Commissioner Lepre?
I just have one thing, I just want to say I really appreciate that you guys are looking at temporary signs in town, because I just noticed, even on Main Street lately, walking up and down, paper signs in the windows, a lot of them clutter, I'm, I'm totally in favor of flyers advertising local events, because that's how I learn a lot about them often, and it's great, but I, I appreciate you guys looking into those things, you know, even like Sourdough &amp; Co., I walk by, they have a million signs on the door, you know, it's just kind of, it just values, I think, especially in that location, having it really feel quaint without a bunch of, like, printed paper signs on it, okay, yeah, so thank you for, for looking into that, I think it really enhances the quality of, of our community, and I think that it also makes sure that if you want a sign for, no dogs, whatever it is, put it up a permanent one that looks really nice, yeah.
Anything else?
I had a couple of things.
Uh-huh.
I'd like to talk about the recent event that the city had with the ofrendas and the Sugar Skull Walk, this was something that was put on in part by the Arts and Culture Eldorado, and I wanted to just call public attention to it, I, this was a tremendous event that brought in not just a cross-cultural perspective, but the community really turned out, I saw Commissioner Smith at one of the events, the opening event, I saw a lot of people that I knew during the Sugar Skull Walk on the 2nd, and I also want to say that it was a, an incredible event to, I, I made some new friends during this, so I just tip of the hat to, first, to the artists and the musicians, everyone who participated, and a big thank you to Arts and Culture Eldorado for gathering all of that talent and making sure that we had this celebration, and it was just, just beautiful and tremendous, and I know that they're working on the master plan, and Commissioner Fran, you're part of the advisory...
Yes, the, the art, public art?
Public art plan.
Yes, yes.
And so, I, I just hope that, you know, maybe this gets some notation or is used in, as an example of, of a different kind of art, you know, when you hear art, I think, I tend to think of static pieces, but this was living, participatory, and it was just tremendous, so I, I hope that the city can find a way to continue it in the future. So, I also had a couple of questions for, well, actually, Commissioner Smith, I know you, you were at one of the events, did the rest of you get to enjoy the ofrendas or participate?
The only thing I would add is that for those of you who weren't there, you see the photographs, folks out there, it's the feeling, there was a sense of, of community and friendliness and warmth that you can't see with the photographs, the indigenous music, the location for the mariachi band was perfect, because it needs to, like in a courtyard, resonate off the walls, so it was really lovely, and I think that next year you'll find that it'll be considerably larger just for the same event, that's all I would add.
I just hope this, you know, gets, this was a good launch, and I'd like to see the community, you know, continue and participate, so with that, I had a couple of questions for staff, I, in driving around, I noticed that there's the motel on Broadway, we approve their remodel, any word on when they might be open for business?
I see I'm working on it.
Yeah, so there's progress.
Staff met with the project proponents that are doing the remodel, and if you recall, the planning commission approved a site plan review for, for their reimaging of the hotel. Unfortunately, the construction project has, has ran a long time, and so the place, because it's not secure, there's been a lot of vandalism, and they removed all of the windows on the one building on the west side, so at the, it would be the west elevation, they removed all the windows, and then on the, at the east building, they removed all the windows on the east side. It was staff's opinion that that was a major change to the, to the commission's approved site plan review. The applicant felt that that would cost them a lot of additional time, so they requested a meeting with senior staff, the city manager, to see if they could get a different opinion on that, and so it was the city's opinion that that would constitute a major change of their site plan review. So, they're going to have to provide us something that is substantially consistent with the elevations approved by the commission.
Okay, I had noticed some, some activity, it was very quiet there for a long time, we, you know, we worked with them, approved their plan, but just looked like they had made some forward momentum, but it sounds like they've maybe stalled out, so we'll, to be continued on that.
Right, if you recall, some of the railing, the staircase, that was supposed to be basically removed and redone in, you know, metal railing per, per the site plan, but they're indicating now that they want to keep the original railing and, and everything that's there. We're not sure about its condition, but we informed them that that would be, again, a substantial change to the elevations, if they want to go back to something different, well, as original, they would have to come back to the planning commission. So, it looks like they're sort of, they're having a change of heart on different things, but we're trying to work with them to keep it moving forward.
Well, thank you for that, and my other question for staff was if the SPR 23-14 for bricks, was that appealed?
There was no appeal.
Okay, great, thank you, that's all I had.
You mentioned that, oh, Commissioner Carter, go ahead.
Oh, I just wanted to say that I noticed that the modulars at Marshall are finally gone, so that is a very nice, they, they were well past their schedule to have those removed, and they are officially gone, so I was happy to see that, so, thank you.
So, Commissioner Keeney, you mentioned the public art committee that...
The master plan?
The ma, with the master plan, yeah, for the city, and I think the, the progress with that is, is going pretty well, Pierre was at the last meeting that they had, and the first draft of the plan was presented, I have to get my comments into them. One thing, I was gone for the last meeting, and, but it was in, spent a night in a little town in Colorado, Steamboat, Colorado, and walking the street there, interestingly, a state highway runs right, is, is their main street, it's actually, I want to say Highway 48 or something, but one of the things, I took some pictures, in one place, they had a bench, and at that bench was a, a figure of Benjamin Franklin, and what was great about it, it was a, a place to sit and a photo opportunity, you know, right there, it was really wonderful, and I thought, you know, we could have Snowshoe Thompson, or we could have Studebaker, or we could even have Benjamin Franklin, it wouldn't bother me at all, but those are the kinds of things, that becomes functional art, so art isn't simply a mural, or even just a statue or whatever, here's something that's functional, and it was a, a place of interest, and Ben and I had a good conversation, so, really excited, those are the little things, I think, that can make a difference, and really add something on Main Street, so, anyway, with that, Pierre Fran, I just have to make a real quick comment, you mentioned Snowshoe Thompson, and Snowshoe Thompson, his route, I think was from Placerville to Genoa. Oh, yeah, yeah. Nevada, and so if those of you have been to Genoa in Nevada, there's a full statue of Snowshoe Thompson there in, in the middle of that town. And, you know, they have a big, they have a big festival in, in Hope Valley, I think in Mar, they do it every year in March, the problem is, is often so much snow, it can be difficult to get to, but yeah, there's a big Snowshoe Thompson Society over there that way, and so, with nothing else on the agenda, I wish everyone a, a happy Thanksgiving, eat as much as you want, no restrictions from the chair, and then we'll see you all on the 5th of December. We are adjourned, thank you.